Brookings County Commission Meeting, called Order 830, Tuesday, May 21st, 2024. Will you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
The allegiance to the life of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three on the agenda is an invitation for citizens scheduled time on the commission agenda for an item not listed. There's a five-minute time limit per person. Item must sign in prior to the start of the meeting. No commission action will be taken during this agenda item. Scheduled for a future meeting date. We have one individual that signed in this morning. Mr. Rick Wyble, would you please come forward?
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Rick Wyble, and you know why I'm here: election integrity. Number one, we have crossed nexus that in our elections that we are about to have here on June 4th, this is a sample ballot provided by the county, which indicates that there is a presidential election. So therefore, federal law automatically gets triggered up. What you may not be aware is that in simplistic terms, when we put the ballots into the tabulators, it automatically takes a picture of that ballot, thus creating an election record or election material, which under federal guidelines must be saved. And you can find that statute federally under 52 USC 20701. That is part of the civil rights legislation that requires all election materials be saved for voter registrations, tabulations, as well as any other election materials associated with a federal election. We have evidence that the Secretary of State's office directed ESNS to not save those ballot images. The Secretary of State does not have the authority to do that. ESNS knows as a vendor that under 52 USC 20702, that they would be violating federal law and allowing that to happen. My guidance to all of the auditors across the state, and especially our good auditor, do not fall for that, and please comply with the federal law and make sure that the saving of ballot images is turned on. The very fact that those ballot images are created is the nexus, because then the machine uses those ballot images to then evaluate how the voters cast their ballots. That is essential to make sure that we are operating at a high level for post-election audits, as well as if there's a candidate that believes that there's an issue with the election, to be able to have those, that part of that evidence. We also have documentation directly from the U.S. Department of Justice, where you can actually look at federal prosecution of election offenses. And this is a direct Department of Justice FBI manual from 2017 that basically talks about how the election records must be maintained. We also have direct guidance that was just updated last month by the Department of Justice, talking about ballot images and records and all of the records retention. That is available on the Department of Justice's website. We also have that available at Midwest Swamp Watch, and I'll be publishing it on uscase.org as well, all of this material. So it is important that we make sure that we are not setting up our auditors to fail. When we look at ballot images and cast vote records, I apologize that I didn't find that for you, because that is in the voluntary voting system guidelines and at the EAC. A ballot image is an electronically produced record of all votes cast by a single voter. See also, cast vote record. permanent record of all votes produced by a single voter, whether in electronic, paper, or other form, also referred as ballot image, when used to refer to electronic ballots. So that's when we look at this document here, which is our certification for our equipment here, within the entire state of South Dakota, but also here in the county. When we look at what a tabulator is, it's a polling place paper-based voting system, specifically a digital scanner and tabulator that simultaneously scans the front and back of a paper ballot and/or vote summary card in any of the four orientations for conversion of voter selection marks to electronic cast vote records. Now you know clearly that it's a ballot image, that it takes a picture of it. So that's where we have to make sure, if we want to make sure that our elections are secure, we need those images. Thank you.
Moving on. The agenda, do I have a motion to approve?
Still moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any additions or corrections? Any comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Motion carried. Item number five is consent agenda items. I have the minutes, travel and education requests, personnel, action notices, cellular authorizations, human services report. Do I have a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any comments? Questions? Call the roll, please.
Vanderwall.
Aye.
Bartley.
Aye.
Progman.
Aye.
Hostler.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Moving on to routine business, approval of the claims. Do I have a motion to approve the claims?
Still moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Comments? No comments? Call the roll, please.
Bartley.
Aye.
Progman.
Aye.
Hostler.
Aye.
Vanderwall.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Motion carries.
I have them number B on the agenda. Department head reports. Brian with the Highway Department.
Good morning.
Morning.
Last week, I'm sure maybe a few of you have noticed that we started working on our new road. It'll be more formally known as 16A. We mowed the shoulders, graded, and we started putting down some gravel. We're still going to continue until that's completed. Biggest issue out there that want everybody to be aware of is that the stop signs at the intersection of 475 and our 214, or more formally as Brookings County 16A, to allow for through traffic on our Brookings County roadway. So this intersection will now be a two-way stop. Temporary top stop signs were left in place while we're working out there, but they'll be removed when they're, when that's completed. Additionally, the speed limits out there on 16A will be posted at 45 miles per hour, and those will need to be followed up with a ordinance to make them enforceable. But right now, that's what they're getting posted at. Does anybody have any questions on our 214 or 16A? Moving on then, our 2024 state radio bid opening will be June 11th, 2024, at 2:00 PM downstairs at the government center here in room 221. Our overlay project, we're anticipating mid-June start. Brookings County crews will remove the guardrail and excavate bridge ends on the southernmost, most bridge to allow for the repairs of the bridge abutments. Expect two- to three-week closure when that takes place. I'm waiting to hear exact timeframe from the contractor, so we're not having an extended closure period. And then there'll be a, it'll be open, but the bridge, or bridge ends will be gravled up to, and then till bose can get there to do the paving work. The chip seal project, do not have a construction schedule yet. Other governmental projects that are going on around the area, BMU, Western Avenue, the only work they had to do on 44th Street South or Brookings County 12 was a manhole got paved over last year, an attempt to get that open late in the season. So this year, they had to dig that up, and as of last week, it has not been patched back in. So that's kind of gra, or that's still gravel. City of Aurora is tentatively planned closure of Brookings County Road 23 through Towne of Aurora there, or Broadway Avenue, beginning June 17th, 2024. They've already started work on the side streets leading up to our, our road, but haven't heard when they're going to close that str, or section down in Aurora. But that's the tentative plan on our road. The City of White project, our county Road 25 through White has been awarded, but is waiting state, state approval. So at this point in time, unknown construction schedule currently. And a last project that's kind of going on around the county that's had some effect on some of our residents out of the county is the paving that was supposed to take place last year out at Oakwood, took place last week. So there was some additional traffic on some of them township roads out and about McCounty there. So that's what I got for an update.
Any questions for Brian? Thank you.
Thank you.
Sheriff?
Good morning.
Morning.
Just, I gave you a detention center report and stuff, and I won't, we're down in numbers right now in the jail, which is probably good. Yeah, we're at 43. But again, the weekends are usually busy for us, and by Monday, a lot of them are out. 24/7 remains to be busy. You've got 151 participants. So that area always stays, stays busy. The guys have been busy with traffic complaints. Kind of glad the end of school is the end of school. We've had lots of stuff going on in all the schools, it seems like, this year. So I think my school resource officer is kind of glad to have summer break. But now he's busy going to do bike rodeos and a lot of community policing things. So he's, he stays busy, and then he helps with calls, too, anyway. So, other than that, the only thing I wanted to bring up is that I got an estimate from mid-state, and then Midwest glass to the, the old part of the sheriff's office. That's the original windows from 1975, and the gas or whatever in between is gone, you know? So you can't get them clean. Basically, they look dirty all the time. And then they're not well insulated either. So I do have money in the building fund. Stacy always puts money in the building fund. So I'm looking to, you know, put new glass on all the, the old part of the sheriff's office. And then also, I'd like, I'd like to get an estimate, I'm going to get an estimate for the LED lights. Those basically have been around for a long time, too. And they're the old style, and the ballast goes out. They're kind of spendy. So I think we'll probably go to LED. So I just kind of, there's money in the building budget for this. So I just, unless you guys have any disagreement with that, but it's probably time to get those windows changed. We did change out right after the first of the year, in the lobby of the sheriff's office, he got windows at the top, and they were, they had a hole in one, didn't go through both panes. But that's, that's, that's been replaced right after the first of the year. So, so, so if that, do you guys have any issue with me going ahead and getting a bid for the LED lighting and probably change out lights?
That we talked about with the LEDs for this building, is that something that we might be able to have them bid and add for the sheriff's office as well?
That's a city project, so no, I wouldn't think so, no.
Thank you.
Jacob, equalization?
Morning. The 2024 Abstract of Values was due by law the third Monday in May, which would have been yesterday. I submitted that online through the AxioMatic portal on Monday, May 13th. They're working on, doing their double checks on that right now. We have factors for taxable values for 2024 assessment, pay, and 2025 taxes. Those have been approved. The egg factor is again 85, which, which means we're at 100% of market through the productivity method. That's continued that way since 2010. The non-egg factor this year is 0.967, meaning if you have $100,000 property, you're going to pay tax on 96,700 of that. And that number comes from how close we assess property in the current year in relation to the sales that took place last year for the sales analysis. We ended at 87.9% of market value on the median, which is roughly 1% better than we were a year ago. Just for information, the allowable window from the state is 85 to 100%. So we've just met the bottom of that criteria. But as the market continues to be strong, it's, it's, and we're aggressive with our values, it's tougher to, to land at that ideal 92 to 94%. But we've improved over last year. So that's the takeaway from that. We do, we have been informed of an Office of Hearing Examiners' appeal, which is the next step after the County Board of Equalization, which you guys heard appeals in April. That same property owner has appealed those seven properties to the Office of Hearing Examiners. I brought Dan and his office into the loop. They'll be there to represent us whenever that hearing gets scheduled. And I'm working on the backend on, on doing seven narrative appraisals. So as, as that hearing approaches, I'll keep you in the loop on how that's going. Also have, I believe, seven abatements here at the end of the agenda, and I'll be here to provide background on those as well. Any questions for me?
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Bob from Emergency Management?
Good morning. May 9th, we had our PPC slash pod meeting over at the hospital. We had a tri-state meeting, which is Nebraska, Iowa, Minnesota, and South Dakota, even though it's called tri-state. Participated in that over a Zoom call. We tested our iPOS. iPOS is our cell phone notification where we can force for tornado warnings out. I participated in the Brookings County Outdoor Adventure Center Welcome the Summer Event. We brought Tommy the Turtle in from Pierre, and he was a big hit with the young ones. May 16th, we had a local emergency planning committee meeting. Last night, I attended the Six Mile Creek Flood Study. And that's getting to be interesting. I'd recommend the commission take a good look at that study if you ever get time. And it's going to be an interesting project as it, as it comes further. Of course, Six Mile Creek raises havoc all the way from Dool County all the way to the Big Sioux River. And they're studying a specific portion in the city of Brookings. But it's an interesting meeting last night. I recommend you stay on top of it. May 28th, I'll have to do a late travel request, but May 28th, I've got a Homeland Security meeting in Mitchell. They've got, they came back after our last Homeland Security meeting, which was held here in Brookings. And Homeland Security has cut the budget by 10%. So we've got to go back, look at the Homeland Security grants that we approved a month or so ago now, and go back through them again and, and cut 10 more percent off them. So, and that's actually going to trickle down to probably, I don't know how much we'll have for budget hearings next month, but it looks like the whole Homeland Security, Department of Homeland Security, which Emergency Manager falls under, they're all getting massive budget cuts for some odd reason. And you, you compare that with the cuts at the federal level, with the big storms coming down south, it looks like some of the funding that we've been seeing from FEMA may be, may be hard to get here in the future, but we'll, we'll keep seeing. And on June 4th, which typically would be a county commission meeting, but since of the election, it's going to be, your, your meeting's pushed back to the 6th. I'm scheduled to attend a class in Pierre to do emergency operations planning. And I'll turn a late, late travel request in for that one. Any questions?
Any questions, Bob?
Thank you.
Thank you. Bill?
Good morning.
Morning.
Last week, I attended the SDACO workshop in Pierre. And a couple of things that, that are new, and that I, what really stands out in my mind about, you always learn something. But one thing with the Secretary of State's office explained a new law that's coming in in July for notaries, for remote notarization, and what we have to look for in the documents, if that is the case, in any of the documents. There's an affidavit has to come along with that notary acknowledgement. And also, the acknowledgement has to read that it was done remotely. The other thing is DOT spoke with us and showed us on their website how to get to their interactive map that has all the roads and section lines and everything for the entire state. And you can zoom in on our county, and it'll tell you if it's a county road, or a township road, or anything like that, which will be helpful. But they also need our help in keeping that updated, because townships can vacate some of the roads that are not used, and which we have had. One township, Richland Township, came in and researched which roads had been vacated and which needed to be vacated. And they went ahead and vacated the roads not used. But DOT then requested from all the register deeds if we will send them copies of those resolutions that have been recorded with us, so that they can keep their maps up to date, and then in the, going in, ahead in the future to do that, you know, as they come in. So those are two things. Now that, now to the reason why I'm, I'm really here. Yesterday, Tammy Hanson, my deputy, submitted her resignation for retirement. She will be retiring June 14th. I had approached Stacy earlier anticipating this, about moving Christie, our administrative assistant, into the deputy position. And the commission approved that. So I did offer that to Christie yesterday, which she accepted. And I'm coming to ask you today if we can move forward with filling that position, you know, starting the process to fill that position. And Stacy can explain that a lot better than I can. I visited with Stacy and Kristen yesterday about it.
Yeah, since we just got the resignation officially yesterday, I think the ask is to start advertising for that administrative position now, immediately, today. And then at the next meeting, you'll see the request to fill vacancy, all the official paperwork, paperwork. But we really don't want to wait until June 6th to get that approved and start the advertisement process. Tammy was very gracious and gave a month's notice, so we can be probably pretty close to getting someone, you know, here. They won't be down to just two people for too terribly long, hopefully, is the hope. So if you are okay with that, start that process. I see all heads nodding, so.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Finance office. Be it noted items. Payroll and additive totals, highway expenditure report, register of deed statement of fees collected. We do have a nine o'clock scheduled agenda item.
We can, we, it's not a public hearing, so if you want to get started on that, you sure can.
Okay. Beta, Brookings Area Transfer Authority update. Executive Director Travis Bortner, please come forward.
All right, just coming up and speak. Just kind of want to give you guys an update. And I know, I'm sure in the back of everybody's mind is what's up with the building. So first, I want to let you guys know kind of how things are running with Beta right now. We're extremely busy. Since October 1st, we've provided 98,000 rides, basically mostly within the city or county of Brookings. We do have a few of those do line up with Dell Rapids and Freeman, but those are such a small portion of what we do that. a small portion of what we do that we kinda almost ignore what they do and, and really focus on what we're getting done here. But, so some of that's there. Kids rides for the youth is just astronomical, even with the in-town busing and stuff that the school district started. It, it cut us back a little bit, but we're so far above last year's numbers. I think we're, we're up almost nine thousand rides over last year so far this fiscal year. So, so that's, that's good there. You know, I try and keep everything fiscally responsible, and, and I really appreciate, Larry, you kinda started off when we brought in a county commissioner. I know we had him before, but you, you kinda jump-started the positive collaboration there, and Ryan's been great to work with, especially working with new buildings and stuff. You know, so we are working on that new building. I should have a, I should have an appraisal done on our old building on the county highway grounds, the first part of next month. We should have that, so we get a better idea of the value on that. Also, through, we just did open bids on the building on our remodel last week, and they're all expecting an October seventeenth substantial completion date. So I'd like to say that building's available earlier than that, but, but I do need a place to wash my vehicles yet. So, and probably a heads up for anybody that they're probably gonna see a few vehicles parked over there during some of this construction. It's a pretty quick turnaround on their construction, so I don't know how much they're gonna tear up of this, our new building all at one time. So we're gonna have a lot of vehicles sitting out, but we just appreciate all that you guys have done for, for Beta and, and continue to do.
Any questions for Travis or comments?
I just had a few questions, Travis.
Sure.
Appreciate all the work you're doing. Obviously, I'm concerned about drunk driving here in the county. And we obviously, unfortunately, have a lot of it. You know, drunk driving is, has increased in the last three to four years by close to twenty percent in terms of the number of drunk drivers that are on the road. I just wonder if, is Beta willing to try to work, I guess, closer with our local drinking establishments, bars downtown, folks over in Volga, to try to, I guess, bring more awareness that, you know, Beta is available as a, as a sober transport home, and just trying to figure that out in terms of your guys' involvement as a availability there?
So, so that program runs in conjunction with SDSU's Wellness Center. So they kinda headed up, they, we, we let people know it's for everybody, and they kinda let it, everybody know it's for students. So it's, it's, we, we do try and get it out there. We, we've had a change, there was like an app to request rides that SDSU had. They had a software provider that sold out, and, and it just, it doubled in price, and we got less out of it. So we're trying to get our software and our app out into the public so they can schedule those rides. I know we did provide, I think it was just over seventeen thousand rides this year, this last school year, under that Rabbit Ride program. Previously, when they had that other app, we peaked at like twenty-five thousand rides. But it's, it's very similar to the activity that goes on downtown. You know, there, there's establishments that do really good this year, and then they don't do so good, and then, but this other one might do well. And that's kinda what we've seen, we've seen that Rabbit Ride or Safe Ride program kinda ebb and flow on who rides it. And I've got a lot of ideas on that, too, that, that would make some things better, but maybe we could talk about that sometime.
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm open to that. Just let me know if there's anything I can do to try to make sure that our, our businesses that do serve alcohol, I think part of it is them pushing it as well.
Yeah.
And I don't know if that's more signs or flyers in the bar or announcements or things like that, but I just think that there's a lot of drivers out there that wouldn't maybe drive if they knew that they had a Beta available.
Right.
So appreciate your work on that.
Yeah, and you know, someday when there maybe isn't a viable taxi in town, that, you know, that's something that's easier for us to look at the nights and weekends. For example, Pierre with River City Transit, they don't have a taxi in town, so there isn't, you know, constraints, federal constraints on that, so that's easy for them to be open twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. So that, that's kind of a, it's a financial thing to keep it running and still make it viable, for it to be, go outside of that Safe Ride, Rabbit Ride program.
Yeah, and that's one of the things that I've learned on this board is we cannot compete with private. And so as long as there's a private option out there, Beta just can't show up at the front of the bar and say, hey, five bucks, jump in. You can't do that. And so the scheduled part of it is really good, and that's what, it is allowed, because we've talked about this multiple times in our, how can we expand that service at that time when it's needed? One is difficult for drivers, and one you can't monitor because one's trying to drive safely, and if something happens behind, you know, that person trying to get them there. But we definitely have talked about it, but a little bit hamstrung with the federal guidelines that we cannot compete with private. And that's, that was the one thing we've talked about multiple times, that doesn't allow us to really be aggressive on it.
Right, yeah, and they definitely need a monitor. It gets pretty crazy in the back of the bus sometimes, so.
Thank you.
You bet.
I'd like to say, too, thanks for the services you provide in Brookings community. At times, for some of these people, it's their only option. You know, if the elderly, the veterans, and people getting to their hospital visits and...
And that's something we try and talk through with the board a lot, and we're getting there. We're, you know, we know who our ridership is, and it's not those that have a vehicle at home, it, it's those that don't have it and just don't have that opportunity. So, but yeah, it's, I mean, it's there. Nobody knows about it until they need it, so, and once they find out about it, then it's the greatest thing. So if we just get a few more people to find out, it's the greatest thing out there.
All right.
Just a quick comment. I, I appreciate Beta. I mean, I have a business that uses Beta a lot.
Oh, yeah.
With my clients. And I always appreciate how the drivers are so courteous with these people. They help them in the door. I've got just a little bit of a lip they gotta get into, but they'll help. They, when I call them to pick these people up, five, ten minutes, and they're, they're there. So I appreciate that, and so do my clients.
Yeah, it's what we do. You're in a good location for that.
Yeah.
Travis, thank you again. Do you anticipate having a, an open house for the new facility at some point in time?
Yeah, they, like, they've wanted to do it already, but I don't wanna bring somebody into a half-finished building. I just soon finished. Not that the building's bad, but it is just a garage that we're making work, you know, for the time being. So once we get it all done, we'll definitely have an open house for that. There's, it's, it's planned, we just have to get to it. And you know, if the substantial completion of October seventeenth, who knows, we might have snow on the ground, and it'd be fun to have it, you know, out, outside and not just crammed in the garage. So maybe it'll be next spring. If the weather holds up, we'll do it this fall yet.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Item B on our agenda is a Government Center Energy LED Project. Brookings Community Development Director Mike Struck and Brookings City Chief Building Official Jared Thomas.
They, Development Director of the City of Brookings, and I have Jared Thomas here, our Chief Building Official. We're here today to present a potential project here for this facility that we're in right now. The City of Brookings embarked on a energy efficiency project through the state law. It's, you can do energy performance contracts. Typically, they come with a fifteen-year guarantee, and so we partnered with a company called Ameresco. They came and did an energy audit of all of our facilities around the city, pulled the utility bills, looked at where we could see some savings and such. And so one of the projects that we wanted to bring to you today is to see what your interest would be in a partnership with this facility as far as with the lighting upgrades. Currently, we partner with another company that kinda does a facility audit, maintenance schedule, so that we know kinda how to help program out CIP items with some of our different facilities. And I believe it's about ten years from now, this building is scheduled for a total replacement of all the light fixtures and everything, and it comes with a price tag estimated at about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We've noticed over the last year, year and a half, we're seeing a lot more of the lights in this building. The bulbs are burning out, some of the ballasts are going bad. And so this is an opportunity, if you're interested, with the partnership between the city and county, that we could add this facility to our overall project. How you pay for this is you continue to budget your current utility rates as they currently are, and then you add an inflationary factor into it. But you basically, your energy rates will reduce, but you still budget the same amount, and that difference is what you use to help pay back the capital investment that's made in the new light fixtures and such. As part of this calculation, you know, it's a guaranteed contract, so they have to do an energy audit for the first three years to ensure that you're meeting those savings. If they don't meet those savings, there's a couple of options. They either reimburse us the amount to make sure that we reach those guaranteed savings, or they have to make additional changes with the fixtures and such to make sure that we do achieve those guaranteed energy savings. What it would mean from a financial perspective is essentially not much changes with the way you currently budget for the utilities for this particular building. You'd still budget, you know, the same amount plus inflation, but it'd be the difference between what you're seeing in those energy savings and what you're budgeting. That difference is what you use to put towards, back towards the capital project. So it, it's kind of a brief overview of the project, but wanted to see if there is interest by the county in moving forward with a project like this. The city's moving forward with a number of our facilities around the community. Some of the rooms in this facility have already been upgraded, so they wouldn't, you know, we wouldn't necessarily include those in the project, but, you know, you start looking at some of the larger rooms, offices, they could be incorporated. We did present this briefly at the Joint Powers Board a week or two ago, and seemed to be general support, but we felt we better bring it to the commission as a whole and see if there's interest.
Any questions from the commission?
So there's no upfront capital costs at the beginning? We're paying that off from the savings that we make, even though we're making our normal payments?
Correct.
And then when's the end of life of that? Is that fifteen years when?
So, you know, fifteen years is part of the state requirement through the statutory requirements for these guaranteed energy savings contracts, performance contracts. But the equipment is, you know, expected to last even longer than the fifteen years. But the fifteen-year timeframe is, is the parameters that they have to guarantee the energy savings within.
That's correct.
Yeah, I guess the upfront capital cost is really, the city's making the upfront capital costs, but the county, we're just asking you to basically pay it back over the fifteen-year timeframe with your energy savings.
When you talk about fixtures, and we look up at the ceiling we've got here, and this is, excuse me, one of the rooms you'd probably redo. Are we talking about a completely new fixture or just bulb replacements?
No, go ahead, Jared.
It kinda depends on, you know, when, we don't have a specific breakdown for every building, but generally, they're looking at fixture replacements. If they can use the same fixture and remove the ballast and the CFLs and go back in with LED, then they will do that. If, if that doesn't financially make sense, then they would look at a completely new fixture.
I guess, question for Auditor Finance, would this be a budgetary problem or?
No, because what we're doing is basically budgeting the same amount. There will be some routine inflation over the years, so when we work with the city in setting the budget for this building, we'll set the budget for this building, and, I mean, that will be done through my office, working with, with Jake and Mike and on the budget now that we currently do. So really, it, it, it won't be any difference further on the county side. We're just gonna be budgeting basically the same amount plus inflation here moving forward that we are currently.
I think the simplest way to explain it is, if you're currently paying fifty thousand a year in utilities, and we do this project, and your utility bills actually drop down to, say, forty thousand, you still budget at fifty thousand. It's that ten thousand dollars difference that would, you'd be putting into repaying back to city. And then you'd increase it by whatever inflation might be for that year. It's a way to, to do these improvements over a longer period of time without taking that significant capital investment in your budget in a one-year time period.
Just a quick question. Your, your presentation says City Hall LED Light Conversion Scope, the hundred and seventy-six thousand, is that for the entire building, city and county, or is that just the projection for the city?
Yeah, it, it's for the city and county government center.
It is the entire city.
Yeah, yeah, they just called it City Hall, and that's just a typo, but moving forward, we would make sure they clarified that, so.
So at some point, you'll get a firm project cost, or is this it?
This is, so there's a overall project cost that the city had, and we can add this in here. This page was, I asked them to provide a one-pager that was just specific to this building so that you guys got an understanding of the scope. So this is, we're kind of in the phase of defining the scope of the project. They've presented us a couple of different options, and so, you know, whether we add this building in or not, that kinda, those are one of the final questions that we're looking for, for the scope. And so once that scope is in, then we will have a, we'll have a final number that we would take to City Council for review.
Any further questions? Comments?
I mean, I don't have a problem moving forward. I think it's, make sure the project costs stay similar. And I guess if you're doing it by building on the city side, all your buildings? Is that your entire project is all your buildings?
Yes, yep.
Why couldn't we, as part of this project, throw the jail in as part of our project cost? In other words, if there's a cost savings involved with it, would we add our Sheriff's Department? Probably not a lot of lights, maybe it doesn't make difference.
Yeah, there's, there's, there's a potential there. With where we're at in our process, we didn't include any of the county buildings. It was just this facility, just because we're, you know, a share in it. But yeah, the, the county didn't have, to my knowledge, didn't have any done. So if we were to try to add some county facilities into this project, it would kinda probably push us back a little bit. But I think there, there is an opportunity there, and we could sure pass on some information if that's something the county would like to look at with their facilities as well.
Well, besides the Sheriff's Department, the BCOAC, if we make conversions out there already, are we talking about it?
That's already done.
It's been done, okay. So we got one done already. And maybe that Sheriff's is too small a project to even consider.
Well, one of the things off of that point that we could do is, is when they're doing this building or your buildings, as long as they're in town, maybe we can get them over there and get us a bid of, of the Sheriff's Department, and it might be some efficiencies there rather than a travel cost coming a year later. So maybe we should get that contact information of this project, see if they can give us a bid, and then that'd be a bid to, depending on where it comes in at, that we could use for the Sheriff's Department, too. So maybe we can get that contact information.
Yeah, we can pass that along.
I guess what we're looking for then would be a motion to proceed.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Have a motion and a second. Any comments, further discussion? There are none, call it all, please.
Prokman.
Aye.
Posler.
Aye.
Vanderwal.
Aye.
Bartley.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number eight on the agenda is regular business. Action to approve Resolution Number twenty-four dash eighteen, a plat of Oak Lake Wetland Conservation Easement Tracks One and Two located in the southeast quarter of... located in the southeast quarter of northwest quarter of south and southwest quarter of section twenty-four Township. One twelve north range forty-eight west of the fifth prime area in Brookings County, South Dakota. Do I have motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. And motion a second. Any comments? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Hostler.
Aye.
Vanderwall.
Aye.
Bartley.
Aye.
Progman.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item B is action to approve resolution number twenty-four dash nineteen. Uh, a resolution assuring fair housing. Do I have motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
And motion a second. Any comments?
So this resolution, along with some of the documents coming up a little later in the agenda, are all, um, requests from, um, basically got them from First District. They all involve the C D B G grant for the Ivy Center, uh, Ivy Center project.
Okay. Any other comments? Call the roll, please.
Vanderwall.
Aye.
Bartley.
Aye.
Progman.
Aye.
Hostler.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item C, action approve agreement number twenty-four dash fifty-four. A South Dakota Department of Transportation agreement for use and restoration of detour and/or wet weather detour. Do I have motion to approve?
Move approval.
Second.
And motion a second. Comments?
I met with, uh, Matt Bray out there with the, the Department of Transportation. Um, I also coordinated with, uh, City of Elkton staff. Um, kinda the biggest concern that I had is that these two projects, uh, Elkton's looking at over project, uh, next year and, or the following year, I apologize. Uh, the D O T is looking at closing down Highway thirteen next year, uh, to replace a bridge north of Elkton on Highway thirteen. And I didn't want those two projects to, uh, to clash, uh, so I did find out that information. And knowing that they're going to be doing that project, there's gonna be a request coming from the City of Elkton that will be, uh, uh, on this County Road thirty or two seventeenth, and it'll be, uh, completely tearing, uh, that road up to replace their sewer, uh, the following year. So kind of my biggest areas of concern on that County Road thirty were within those project limits. So, uh, talking that out with the City of Elkton staff and then connect, uh, contacting their engineer that they have on staff, uh, and then working with Matt, uh, we came up with a little bit of patching that they can get some federal funding for, uh, to prepare that road for the detour to enter the City of Elkton from the east. Uh, this, uh, coming to find out too, the county or state Highway thirteen will be open from the City of Elkton or at Elkton all the way to three twenty-four. So it'll just be that stretch in between, uh, fourteen and the City of Elkton that'll be closed next year, uh, you know, while they're replacing that culvert. And then, uh, it'll kinda flip-flop so they can continue the construction, uh, widening and that on the thirteen that heads east and west. So I did a little research on that and kinda came to an agreement with Matt, and I feel comfortable with, uh, bringing this to you guys, knowing that we do have some future projects in Elkton too, so.
I see this as into Minnesota. Um, what's the communication been with them?
Um, that the D O T worked through with them. Uh, I didn't have anything to do with that. Um, we're just looking at our, our segment of the road that we're responsible for.
But they're, you know, obviously you can get that, that.
They have an agreement with them already.
Because if they don't.
Yep, yep, yep.
The detour is not working.
I made sure of that too.
Yeah. So basically this state will do their project and the following year then Elkton will do their project.
Correct.
Okay. Should work in theory then.
Should work.
Okay. Any other questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Item D, action approve agreement number twenty-four dash fifty-five, an application for occupancy of the right-of-way of County Highway made by Sioux Valley Energy and Laketon Township. Do I have motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
And motion a second. Any comments?
So this be, uh, maintenance project, uh, along the south side of, uh, Lake Ponton, starting at the state park and heading over to, uh, east of the church or west of the church, sorry.
Okay. Any questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carried. Item E, action approve abatement number twenty-four dash twenty-five. An abatement application made by C D Properties LLC in the amount of eight hundred and sixty-eight dollars and eighty-eight cents for parcel number four zero two four five dash zero zero four zero zero dash zero zero eight dash zero zero five. Do I have motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
And motion a second. Comments?
Yeah, all eight abatements that you have in front of you today on the agenda are related to, uh, the half block on the south side of Sixth Street between twelfth and thirteenth Avenue or Campanneal Avenue. Um, all of those structures were removed off of that lot in late June or early July of twenty twenty-three. So the amounts being abated are the taxes on the structures from the date they were removed through the end of the year.
Okay. These are all, all, all these are the same then?
Yep. They're all eight parcels that were within that half block.
Alrighty. Any other comments? Hearing none. Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carried. Item F, action approve abatement number twenty-four dash twenty-six. An abatement application made by C D Properties LLC in the amount of one thousand three hundred and seventy-three dollars and seventy-nine cents for parcel number four two, four zero two four five dash zero zero four zero zero dash zero zero seven dash zero zero. Do I have motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
And motion a second. Comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carried. Item G, action approve abatement number twenty-four dash twenty-seven. An abatement application made by C D Properties LLC in the amount of seven hundred and forty-eight dollars and nineteen cents for parcel number four zero two four five dash zero zero four zero zero dash zero zero six dash zero zero. Do I have motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
And motion a second. No comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item H, action approve abatement number twenty-four dash twenty-eight. An abatement application made by C D Properties LLC in the amount of three thousand eighty-three dollars and thirty-five cents for parcel number four zero two four five dash zero zero four zero zero dash zero zero five dash zero zero. Do I have motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
And motion a second. Hearing no comments. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carried. Item I, action to approve abatement number twenty-four dash twenty-nine. Abatement application made by C D Properties LLC in the amount of two thousand one hundred and eighty-three dollars and seventy-three cents for parcel number four zero two four five dash zero zero four zero zero dash zero zero two dash zero zero. Do I have motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
And motion a second. Hearing no comments. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carried. Item J, action approve abatement number twenty-four dash thirty. An abatement application made by C D Properties LLC in the amount of one thousand one hundred and thirty-one dollars and three cents for parcel number four zero two four five dash zero zero four zero zero dash zero zero eight dash zero zero. Do I have motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
And motion a second. Hearing no comments. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carried. Item K, action approve abatement twenty-four dash thirty-one. An abatement application made by C D Properties LLC in the amount of two thousand sixty-five dollars and twenty-five cents for parcel number four zero two four five dash zero zero four zero zero dash zero zero one dash zero zero. Do I have motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
And motion a second. Hearing no comments. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carried. Item L, action to approve abatement number twenty-four dash thirty-two. An abatement application made by C D Properties LLC in the amount of three thousand five hundred and ninety-two dollars and seventy-four cents for parcel number four zero two four five dash zero zero four zero zero dash zero zero three dash zero zero. Do I have motion to approve?
So moved.
And motion a second. Any comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carried. Item M, action, uh, action to approve R F P number one for the historic courthouse roof replacement project in the amount of one thousand four hundred and thirteen dollars and fifty cents switching the specified roof drain model. Do I have motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
And motion a second. Comments?
So this is for, um, uh, to change the type of roof drains to be installed at the additional locations on the roof that was indicated in the plans. There was, um, the contractor, uh, is requesting that change. Uh, the drains weren't compatible with the, the single ply roofing membranes that are going on. So that's what this one is. Um, on another note, there is another R F P two coming. Um, this one's a little more, ten thousand, uh, four hundred. This is, um, to replace the existing roof drains. Uh, they're not suitable to the new roof membrane going on. So, um, that one's coming. We'll deal with this one first.
That'll be at a later date.
Yes.
Do we have contingency in the budget?
I don't know what there is for contingency.
So this would just come out of our capital budget?
Um, well, we're actually paying for this out of commission projects funds. There is money there.
Okay. Any other comments? Questions? Call the roll, please.
Bartley.
Aye.
Progman.
Aye.
Hostler.
Aye.
Vanderwall.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item N, action authorize chairperson Jensen to sign documents pertaining to C D B G grant for the Ivy Center expansion project. Do I have motion to approve?
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion a second. Any comments?
I did wanna pull up one comment on excessive force policy. With law enforcement, it's noted law enforcement agencies in there, and I believe, uh, Sheriff Stanwyck, if you can correct me, there, uh, um, in law enforcement training, it's, uh, it's either, um, reasonable or unreasonable use of force. And I don't know if we need to change this wording, uh, to show that, to reflect that, because it is noted. Law enforcement agencies are not. It's just being a past use of force instructor. I know we see excessive force in the news and everything else like that, but law enforcement is trained in unreasonable and reasonable force. Something we needed to just update before we, or approve with that change.
Input from?
Thanks, Bernie.
I visited with, uh, Commissioner Hostler on this. Um, I guess my thought is from a legal standpoint, I think unreasonable and excessive are sort of interchangeable. Um, I don't have any issues with excessive being used. Um, if it's, if it's excessive, it's unreasonable. And if it's unreasonable, it's excessive. Um, I've seen it both ways. Um, I have seen it the way, uh, Commissioner's talking about, but I also have seen excessive force being used. Um, I'm, I'm a little indifferent about it. I mean, if the commissioners want to change, that's fine, but I think the way it is right now, um, protects the county.
I appreciate the comments, but at this point in time, if we change it from excessive to unreasonable, I think this document has to go back to the state and be rewritten and approved with the word change. That slows this entire process down. So I, I'm, I'm okay with, with the comment, but I, I think we need to approve it today.
Whose, whose forms, where did these come from? Do they come from the state? They come from First District?
First District sent these to me as, yeah, these were all documents that they needed as part of that C D B G grant. Yeah.
May, maybe we bring that up, that maybe moving forward, there's a wording change down the road, because if these are standard documents that go with all of these types of grants, maybe that's just a, uh, a comment, uh, you know, so I agree with Commissioner Bartley that we should go ahead and move this forward, uh, with Dan's comments, you know, uh, take it into consideration too. So, um, but maybe it's something that as things have changed and has, you know, this has come to light, maybe a wording change from them down the road is probably not a bad idea.
Any other comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carried. Who, on each one of these, are these forms, Stacy?
Just to prove them as a whole, just all those documents. We don't have to do each one individually, no.
Okay, but I do need to read them.
I don't, it, it, they're on the agenda. It's fine.
Item number O on the agenda is action to approve a fireworks display at four eight three one eight, two hundred and thirteenth street, Elkton, South Dakota, on Saturday, May twenty-fifth at dusk for a family party. Do I have motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion a second. Comments?
This was a request from, um, just a family wanting to do a fireworks display on that date and time noted. Anything that's outside of the, um, time to actually do fireworks, those around the Fourth of July and then around New Year's come, have to come here for approval by this board. Typically, when we get these, um, the, we, we, we tell the people that want to do this that they need to contact their local, um, fire department to make sure, um, that they're aware of it. We also inform law enforcement, so if, if calls come in that there's, this is happening, um, that they're aware of it and, and, and the location and whatnot. So that's why you see this on the agenda.
Just a quick question. Have we ever done an approval for just a family?
Yes, for weddings. Um, a lot of people will do them for weddings and events like that. So yes, it's not, it's not unusual, no. We don't get them too terribly often, but we have had them in the past, yes.
Just commend the family for taking the extra effort to ask permission and, uh, so the dispatch and the fire department and the sheriff's office are on board, so.
Have we ever had any problems with, but what concerns me is you kinda open up, uh, the box for everybody that, any party that anybody wants to have, a wedding or a family reunion, they're gonna be in here doing fireworks. And, um, you know, obviously we do stuff for the, uh, Volga Old Timers' Day and, and some, some of the, uh, city celebrations and stuff. And so I just didn't know if it's something that is gonna become more, um, more requests and does it then become a problem? Um, I just hate that. It's like, well, you let them do it, so you gotta let me do it, you know, type of thing. And, and so, I don't know. Not sure where I'm at on, on opening it up now to each family or parties to have fireworks. I, I do agree. I appreciate that they asked, because they probably could just do it and, and probably not have a problem, but, um, I don't know.
Sometimes, uh, if we're in a burn ban, it, you know, situations where we might, you know, not approve it, but, uh, as of right now, we don't have one, but, uh, that, that's another situation.
Yeah, and it, it seems like when we approve these for like the Old Timers' Day and stuff, they have they have their fire department there, they get in a good possession, they have fire trucks close by or they're taking those types of steps to do that. Not sure what steps, uh, you know, the family party will take, um, and stuff like that. So that's just, you know, a few of my thoughts, thoughts on it. And I just don't want it to get rapid and not be prepared and not take the steps that if something goes wrong.
Is there a, uh, is there like a contract or a, like a license that they have to, anything that they need to contact?
No, I usually, um, i-if it's directed by the Commission and I've already had that conversation with this individual too that, um, you know, that the ask is usually to contact the fire department, let law enforcement know date and time so those types of things in case there is a complaint or an issue. Um, but they're, yeah, we, we, they're pretty few and far between, um, when we get these asks and, I mean, we've had people come in and, and ask and they want to do it. They come in on Thursday and they want to do it Saturday and we say, no because can't get in, in front of you in time. So, I mean, that has happened on occasion as well, so. But like I said, they're not very often but occasionally for certain events that we have done them before.
Sheriff, correct me, but isn't there a certain time that you're allowed to shoot fireworks? Is around the Fourth of July and then around the first year, is that correct? So this actually is out of that timeframe and, you know, they're requesting permission. Um, is the sheriff's office ever had any issues with complaints generated from displays?
I don't know, is, would it be appropriate for us to start putting together an application for this type of, uh, request? That, that covers the notifications and the certification of the notifications of the fire department, law enforcement, uh, possibly neighbors? If we have some neighbors that don't like the fireworks going off. Uh, a time limit, uh, obviously it doesn't get dark in the summertime till quite late versus other times of the year. But would it be appropriate to have a, some type of form that, that, that they have to make this request? Because this doesn't give me a lot of information, Two Hundred Thirteenth Street and the address. Is this in the city limits or is it out of the city limits?
No, if it were in the city limits, that would not be coming to us, that would be going to the city. We did do one of these last year, um, uh, for someone to hold fireworks at Good Roots Farms and Gardens. We did this in, uh, May, about this time last year, we did approve one.
In conjunction probably with wedding but, I don't know, I, we could discuss it but I think we ought to probably consider just having, have a formal application.
It looks like we did do sort of a document that, that the chair signed saying that we're authorizing this, so.
Correct, just don't want to cause any problems and if Commissioner Bartley has a good point, if they had a form that if they have a neighbor that's within half mile or whatever, they have them all get their permission and just have them sign that application and turn it in.
Some kind of notification if nothing else.
Correct.
I guess the complaints that I've heard, and this is more during the Fourth of July, is the, how late they're being, you know, let off, you know. Eleven o'clock and people are saying, well, I gotta work, that's great, love Fourth of July but I gotta be at work at seven in the morning. And people are letting off fireworks until eleven o'clock, twelve o'clock. So, you know, I guess I, I would maybe recommend us putting some type of, uh, a, a limit on it, whether it's ten or ten-thirty, you know, the sun probably doesn't go down, doesn't get dark really till nine, probably about that time anyway. But that would be there, but I, I do agree with, with your point there, Commissioner Bartley, that wouldn't be a bad idea to have the rules and the application that are on there that yes, you can do this but, um, these are the rules you need to follow, uh, to do it. So, um, I think it'd be prudent for us to take care of the rest of our county residents when these are, are given approval to something that is outside, you know, a, a city kind of display or celebration.
Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried. Item P, action approve the Volga Old Timers' Day fireworks display on Friday, June seventh at dusk near Meadow Creek Golf Course, do I have motion approved?
Move to approve, second.
I have motion to second, any comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried. Item Q, action approve a request to fill vacancy for a part-time female correctional officer in the detention center, do I have motion approved?
Still moved, second.
I have motion to second, any comments here? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried. Item number nine, Commission Department Director report.
We have the April Veteran Service Officer Report. Uh, thirteen D A V van, uh, rides, three outreach events. They had one training event and one hundred and eighty-seven appointments or veterans or veterans' families were assisted in April. Um, a couple of things that additionally, we did, as Brian had mentioned earlier, to Fourteenth, we did receive the executive order from the Department of Transportation from Secretary, signed by Secretary Junge, so, um, that is now official. The general fund surplus analysis, that information was included with, uh, my report. We're at forty-four percent for April. Um, the, uh, ten-year average is thirty-nine point nine, so we're just above that so we're in good shape there. Also as part of my packet, you received a thank you note from the Ivy Center and the domestic abuse, uh, abuse shelter now known as Margot's Place. Um, I had mentioned as part of the, the roof project, there is this other RFP. I will get, I don't know because this just came to me, I think, yesterday. I don't know how quick they need to move on this. What I will do is get this information together and I will, you know, send that out to the Commission and find out, you know, what they're looking at for need to move this along. Um, but yes, it was, um, like you said, that first RFP that was, that we did, we had approved here earlier in the meeting was the, um, the change of the type of drains for those additional locations on the roof. This new RFP number two is to replace the existing roof drains. Um, again, not suitable to the new roof mem- membrane that they're putting on there. So on that amount is ten thousand four thirty-one ninety-five. So I'll try to get some information, um, out but I, but that just came to me yesterday. Um, Bob had sent me as part of Naco, we need to register a voting delegate for the, um, annual business meeting. Um, Commissioner Bartley, I know you had kind of talked about going to Naco. Are you still planning on possibly going to that? Yes, um, we need to, we have to have that voting delegate done by, not till early July but that information we have, so I know Bob is attending so if you don't, then we can put Bob then in as our voting delegate at that. Um, other than that, uh, some of the upcoming meeting dates, um, Monday, uh, next Monday, the twenty-seventh, will be closed for Memorial Day. Uh, June fourth, uh, Primary Election Day. June sixth, again, reminder, we're meeting on that Thursday instead of Tuesday to, uh, canvass the primary election, uh, results and then that will be a regular meeting as well. Um, I handed out this morning, uh, Misty Moser, our weed supervisor, had asked me to hand out the, the, the good, bad and similar looking plant tour that's coming up, uh, Wednesday, June twelfth. It is, uh, just north here in, uh, rural Esteline. Um, at the eighteen ninety-eight ranch is where they're gonna be starting. There's some information that, again, that I handed out on that. On June thirteenth is our safety picnic. If you plan to attend, let me know. There are times at eleven noon and one, so let me know if you plan to attend, which one of those times you want to attend the safety picnic out at the O A C that week and then I can get you signed up for the meal, we need a head count for that. Um, budget hearings on the nineteenth, hopefully you all have that on your, on your calendars. Um, June twenty-fourth, it's a Monday, is the R S O Appreciation Night out at the B C O A C. I don't know if, I think some of you plan, uh, do go to that, uh, more than just the, the Advisory Board members. So that's Monday, June twenty-fourth, that's at five-thirty. Um, July fourth this year is a Thursday, will be closed that day for the Fourth of July. Um, looking out a little bit further to get on your calendars, the Ten County Meeting will be in Watertown on August fourteenth, that's a Wednesday. And then the next day, we have the Conservation District Tour that'll start at eight o'clock out at the Conservation District Shed just north of town. So, um, those are coming up here in August. Um, so make note of those, get those on your calendar. And then lastly, I think the Bruce Fire Department feed is tonight. Is that right, the twenty-first? I think it's tonight at five-thirty, I'm guessing that's at their fire hall up there. That's all I have unless you have questions for me.
Questions? State's Attorney's Office report.
Yes, I need to ask permission to post a job opening. So Carly Chapin, who is our Director of Welfare in our office, she's moving to peer. Uh, so she, uh, handed her resignation in effective mid-June. So kind of similar to what Bev requested, just asking for permission to post that notice next week, um, ahead of the next Commission meeting where we'll formally, uh, notice it. So, that's all I have.
Good. Alrighty. Commissioner reports in discussion, Commissioner Vanderwall.
Thank you. On, uh, May seventh, along with the rest of you, attended the Ivy Center Groundbreaking. On Thursday, May ninth, a joint powers meeting here in the Government Center. And then on Thursday, May sixteen, the E nine-one-one budget meeting. We've got one more coming up on Thursday. And then on this morning, along with the rest of you, I went to the Optimus, uh, Law Enforcement Breakfast. That's my report.
Commissioner Bartley.
For the groundbreaking, I should say, groundbreaking for the Ivy Center for Brookings Behavioral Wealth and Health and, uh, Wellness. Uh, well attended, it, uh, uh, it's good to see the fence go up and the old green building get tore down and we're moving in the right direction on that project. Also on the seventh was the County Planning Commission Meeting. Uh, after that, we've got, I did do the Elkton Fireman's Feed. Uh, did get a tour of their new ambulance and a new truck that we, uh, used our special projects fund to help them, uh, pay for. When I got there, the ambulance was used, being used on a run going down to Sioux Falls for an M R I from somebody from Landry and back again. So before I left, the ambulance returned, I got a great, great tour of the new ambulance. It's a pretty nice vehicle. It is a four-wheel drive diesel vehicle so that they can get out and in by weather without having, uh, they had an incident where they had to use their fire truck to, uh, plow the way with the old ambulance once to get to a site. So this will hopefully prevent that. And also this morning, uh, attended the Optimus, uh, Cut Short Luncheon but we'll see if that gets rescheduled or not, Dan. That's my report.
Commissioner Krogman.
Yeah, um, the seventh, I was also at the Ivy, uh, Center Groundbreaking. Great project, glad to be a part of it. Um, and then at the, that evening at the Joint City-City County zoning meeting for joint jurisdiction, uh, the twenty-first, um, which was today, uh, we had the Respect for Law Enforcement Breakfast and then I have a Research Park Board meeting here in about an hour.
Commissioner Hostler.
Yeah, on the seventh, of course, I was, uh, at the Ivy Center Groundbreaking, uh, which had a really nice crowd. Uh, on the ninth, I attended the Joint Powers Board Meeting here, uh, in the Exec Chambers and then, uh, attended the P P C E Pod Planning Meeting, uh, over at the hospital. And then again, uh, on, this morning, the Optimus, uh, Law Enforcement Breakfast. Uh, and, uh, just want to thank all law enforcement first responders for all they do every day. I know last week was law enforcement Memorial Week, uh, so just thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. On the seventh, I went to on the zoning issue. On the eighth, I attended the Conservation Board Meeting. On the sixteenth, I had a E nine-one-one meeting, uh, discussing budgets. On the seventeenth, I did go over to the Elkton Fire, Fireman's Feed. Uh, like Commissioner Bartley, I toured the new, new fire truck and the new, uh, ambulances there. Um, I'd like to comment, the Elkton Firemen, uh, upgraded their jaws of life and, uh, they, uh, offered the, their old equipment to this, uh, Bruce Fire Department. So that was a good exchange between inner department and, uh, that's kind of our plan was it to upgrade equipment in one department and be able to hand it down to another department need, so. On the twentieth, uh, attended the B C O A C Advisory Board Meeting. Um, the Welcome to Summer Event out there was very successful. They had like twenty-four vendors, uh, numerous kids and people were there. Um, also they, we gained a few, uh, in the process, uh, kids were able to shoot archery and when, they, they gained four or five new shooters for the archery. So if, um, you're interested, check out the Outdoor Adventure Center. Uh, and also this morning, attended the Optimus Breakfast for Law Enforcement. With that, uh, item number twelve is executive session in accordance with South Dakota Codified Law one twenty-five dash Personnel Consulting with Legal Counsel. By motion, motion to enter an executive session.
Still moved, second.
I have motion to second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried.